Good evening, everyone. I think we can go ahead and begin with our roll call. Good evening, everyone. We're going to be starting the meeting. If you could please take your seats.
Here.
Joey, if you can do the approval of meeting agenda?
I move that the Board of Education approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Second.
Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillpern?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Karthah?
Yes.
We'll start off with superintendent and board remarks.
Happy to do so. Welcome, everyone, on this warm summer's day. This week ago, we closed school and ended the 17, 18 school year successfully. And we want to take a moment and salute all of our educators and administrators and support staff who make this operation run. It was a good and long year, and with wonderful things going on in our schools, and a lot more work to go on in the year to come. And I just want to take a moment and congratulate all of our colleagues who are working across our 18 schools and programs for outstanding work. Just want to talk for a moment. Last Tuesday, which was our snow makeup day, we had no children involved, but our educators participated in a double-session professional learning. One was active shooter training through the Alice Training System and in collaboration with the Evanston Police. And that was coupled with restorative justice practices that we were practicing in circle across all of our schools. I'll say professionally and personally that in over 34 years of being an educator, I never thought I would use the word "active shooter training" as part of an agenda for the work that we do in our schools. And yet, given the state of the world that we're in and the tragedies that have occurred at Parkland and Columbine and Sandy Hook, we have to be on our toes. And it's something that's essential through the great leadership of Dr. Calgotti, Andalupa, and the team of cabinet members and staff members. We coordinated close to 900 people going through training. And we worked hand in glove with the Evanston Police Department. So I do want to salute the Chief Addington and his colleagues for helping us. And it was a powerful morning of working through what would happen if, God forbid, what would happen if. And it was coupled with then our work on restorative justice practices, which is where we get together and we talk. It's a process to work through emotions and work through how to build a better climate and a better climate and dialogue for our kids. And we actually use that for our adults as well. So again, a powerful day, a powerful way to end the day. We'll continue. We'll continue on safety. It's actually, it's the essential ingredient. And again, I want to salute Dr. Calgotti. Andalupa spent a lot of time coordinating 900 of his best friends to go through this. Typically, I do an equity uptake. And again, we've continued with our Beyond Diversity training, and we're having several cohorts going through right now. Seed training ended for the year. I was in one of the cohorts. It was a fabulous, fabulous opportunity. And we're continuing on. I want you to note that in the package, FYI, in the pack, is an update on all of our equity activities over the year. And it's a significant contribution as we move forward on issues of culturally relevant teaching, as we move forward on racial identity training, as we move forward on affinity groups, and the wide range of activities, both with the adults and what's really exciting, as well as with kids. The kids at Nichols and Schut specifically have been engaged, and I'm really excited about that and excited about the year ahead as we move forward on our equity work. And then finally, this is the last board meeting of the year, so I do want to salute three of our administrators who are moving on to other opportunities. I want to tip my hat, and we'll see him later on, to Wayne Williams at Oakton, who's been a fabulous, fabulous leader at Oakton and as he goes and pursues new opportunity in North Chicago. I want to tip my hat to Matt Condon, who's been a fabulous educator here in the district and is moving on to be a principal up in the North Shore. And I want to say thank you and tip my hat to Amy Small, who is leaving our JH Center after several years of leadership here. All three of those colleagues we will miss, and we wish them very, we wish them well. And my final tip of the hat is to Paula Zelinski, who has served for the last five years as the head of the District Educators Councils, the Teachers Union. And we've worked hand in glove through thick and thin and through lots of fun. And I really wish her well as she goes off into retirement. And I welcome Matt Crewley, who's a fabulous teacher over at Lincoln, as she assumes her new responsibility as head of our Teachers Union. And with that, my report is done.
Any board comments? Okay. We will then move on to public comments. Members of the public are welcome and invited to address the board during open public meetings. The Board of Education will not permit the voicing of personal attacks against any district employee or board member. Please remember to state your name and that you have three minutes to address the board. And our first speaker will be Tara Punwani.
My name is Tara Punwani, and I've had the pleasure of working at JEH for 17 of my 19 years of being a speech and language pathologist. I'm also a proud alum of Dawes, Schut, and ETHS, and my life has now come full circle as a parent of a rising first grader at Dawes. I have seen JEH transition from being nearly invisible when housed at Haven Middle School to now being discussed center stage in a public forum. I want to thank the school board and administration, Opel, and the community at large for shedding light on our youngest learners and for acknowledging the tremendous impact that can occur when we invest our time and resources into our birth-to-three population. As we know, the early childhood years are a time of rapid brain development and growth for our little ones who are just discovering the world around them. Helping children develop social play, communication, and the pre-academic skills that are needed to successfully navigate the world is a tremendous responsibility, and one I do not take lightly. As a parent of a black son who is not yet meeting grade level standards for reading or writing, and as an educator who wants to advocate for systemic change to improve educational outcomes for all children, I too echo the urgency for the conversations centering around the achievement gap to transition into action plans. I am fortunate to work with an incredible group of teachers, related support staff, and para-professionals at JEH, many of whom are all here, and who are wholeheartedly dedicated to helping prepare our children for kindergarten and beyond. Year in and year out, I have seen incredible transformations in children take place due to the work of our wonderful and dedicated early childhood teachers. However, despite all of our efforts, I also fully acknowledge that achievement disparities exist for children of color. Although I stand here alone, I do not believe that I'm alone in the desire to have a seat at the table to work together with all invested stakeholders to improve the academic outcomes for all of our children. One of my early childhood teachers, Mirza Campos, shared this wonderful excerpt from a book on early childhood written by Elizabeth Jones and John Nemo. "Collaboration is not a passive phenomenon. It requires risk-taking with some passion about it. Collaboration involves more than a coming together. It requires more from the participants than simply sharing their perspectives. At best, it requires that the participants reach a new level of understanding, a perspective that was not apparent before. This is the real power of collaboration. I am open and dedicated to looking deeply at our systemic practices at JEH to prevent inequitable outcomes for our students. I hope that we can all work together to make change happen."
Liza Falconer?
My name is Liza Falconer, and I speak here tonight as a parent of an Oakton student, as a staff member here at the Early Childhood Center, and perhaps most importantly, as a community member who is committed to addressing these very real, deeply rooted systemic inequities in our school system. I would like to thank the many parents, concerned citizens, board members, equity consultants, seed leaders, staff members, and organizations such as Opel, who have worked tirelessly to put racial equity at the forefront of decision-making and educational policies and practices here at District 65. I am personally very deeply grateful to have had the opportunity to participate in both Beyond Diversity and Seed this school year, and have watched myself grow and change in ways that can't be fully measured. I will continue to keep this work at the forefront of my mind and heart as I facilitate learning among some of our youngest learners. My primary message today is here of collaboration. From the words of Adrian Marie Brown in the book Emergent Strategies, "What we practice at the small scale sets a pattern for the whole system." I believe relationships are the small scale. They are crucial to any hope of long-lasting systemic change. And relationships are not necessarily grown from committee work. They are not nourished from surveys or reports. Relationships are not fully developed from meetings such as these. They develop from people working alongside one another in tangible acts of service and from reflecting together in a variety of ways. With this in mind, and as our Early Childhood Center transitions to new leadership, my hope is that the following questions will lead consultation on the reallocation of resources for our early learners. Whose voices are being centered here? Whose voices are missing from this conversation? How can we ensure that families, staff members, and community members are integrated into this problem-solving discussion? It is crucial that we stop the pattern of working in silos and continuously try to build more collaborative patterns of decision-making and problem-solving. At the Early Childhood Center, in addition to centering anti-bias, culturally responsive, and relationship-based learning, I hope that for every decision and policy made, we hold each other accountable by asking, what are the racial, cultural, gender, ability, and class implications of this decision? Seed has taught me about the continuous pattern of centering whiteness. And while I can appreciate the irony of me as a white woman standing here and using my voice, I deeply hope it is one of advocacy and allyship. Thank you for listening. What we practice at the small scale sets a pattern for the whole system.
Jennifer Hecathorne?
Hi. My name is Jenny Hecathorne. I've worked in District 65 as an early childhood special educator for 32 years. Prior to coming here this evening, I've spoken with some of my colleagues and listened to their successes, their frustrations, and their dreams. Although I'm speaking just with my voice tonight, I believe I'm also presenting some common observations among the early childhood professionals. First, I would like the school board, administration, and community to know about some of the exceptional growing and learning that is happening in our Early Childhood Center. Children are learning important early literacy skills by listening to books, pretending to read to their stuffed animals, writing menus for the restaurants set up in the house area, seeing print all over their classrooms, and practicing letter identification and phonemic awareness. Math learning is happening while counting the numbers on the calendar, making sure all their friends get an equal number of train cars, figuring out how many cups are needed for snack time, and deciding how best to use the differently shaped blocks to build the tallest tower possible. Daily learning is also happening in science and in social studies through play, books, and exploration. And most importantly, social and emotional learning is happening all the time. Research is showing how critical this is as a foundation for all learning. While we celebrate all our successes, we also recognize that we can and we must do more to address the needs of our youngest district learners. This is especially critical since all the children we serve are children at risk. In our programs, we have many students of color, we have English language learners, we have students with identified special needs, and we have many students whom we know are experiencing trauma in their lives. We need to look more carefully at opportunities for equity across our classes here. We are ready to share our expertise as early childhood professionals and partner with the community to address the inequities that exist. We are excited about the district's plan to reallocate resources in order to provide the supports necessary to meet our goal of helping all children succeed. We have begun a discussion among the early childhood professionals about what those resources might be, and we have been invited by Dr. Goran to share our ideas with him. We recognize that there continues to be systemic racism built into our school, community, and country. I am looking forward to meeting with our district administration, including our new early childhood director, and Opel, Cradle to Career, and other community members to plan how we can assure that all our children are prepared when they leave our program to begin a successful career in elementary school and beyond.
Next, we have Mirza Campos.
My name is Mirza Campos, and today I'm here as a District 65 early childhood educator, but also as a mom of a preschooler, a student here at JEH. While my son is in preschool, my hopes and dreams are that he discovers a sense of wonder, a love of learning, and that he learns to self-regulate his emotions and learns how to interact with other children. Most importantly, that he feels proud of who he is as he develops a sense of self within his own community. I know that my son is learning to do all those things now, but in the process, I have to make sure that he's in the right place. I realized that he was in the right place when his teacher shared with me that one thing that calmed my son down was a hug. I knew that the teacher had taken her time to recognize who my child was and that he needed in order to succeed in his first preschool experience. When I see his teachers being responsive to his social-emotional needs, I know that he is in the right place. I know that he is in the right place when I see his teachers welcoming all his social identities. My hope is that JEH continues to work on equity using an anti-bias education framework, which is not one-stop shop, but at a lens where teachers and administrators are required to individualize students' needs, as if looking through an anti-bias lens with embedded collaboration with families to ensure culturally responsive teaching. As a bilingual preschool teacher, I know that being able to read and write depends on the oral language development, which happens when children listen to stories and are encouraged to use their voices, which is a meaningful, powerful message that children can get. Children deepen their understanding of words during authentic interactions with other children and teachers, which also happens during play. Once they leave preschool, children will want to continue their sense of exploration and love for learning. The opportunity of learning in early years is about developmental milestones that will look differently depending on each child. The children we teach at JEH are only 0 to 60 months old, and their brains are still under construction. So moving forward with a new leadership, it's important to take into considerations what developmentally appropriate best practices are for our children at JEH.
I'm Alice Berry. I'm on the Board of Opel. I want to express a concern about the exodus from the district of educators who fight for racial equity. Three black principals gone this year, and a top administrator leaving soon, and another black principal and another top administrator left last year. In November 2016, there were seven black principals in District 65. What Opel hears from the people we speak to is that this administration doesn't adequately support innovation on the part of principals, that it doesn't have their back, and that this in turn gives teachers the message that they can't risk innovating either, and that affects teacher morale. We conclude that this administration talks the talk about racial equity but folds to pressure, presumably from those in Evanston who want to preserve the status quo. I might characterize this as what New Jim Crow author Michelle Alexander has called "white liberal collapse." Opel has watched this happen. When Nichols Middle School Principal Harry's came under attack in the conservative press, this administration did not voice its full public support for him until after Opel did, and when it did, it didn't mention him by name. We saw this administration pull the rug out from under a black principal at Bessie Rhodes, who was trying to bring stability to a school that's had something like eight principals in 10 years. She isn't bilingual, but she didn't have to be to stay in her job until this administration made a decision that, from what we hear, was probably the result of "not in my backyard" voices in another part of Evanston. Opel has pressed the district for three years to increase hiring of black educators. A few more were hired this past year than the previous year, but the total is still nowhere near what it needs to be. That same EEOC report in November 16 showed that there were just five black male teachers in the entire district. We don't know of any significant increase despite a recent study about the tremendous benefit particularly to black boys of having a black male teacher in grades three to five. Hiring is only part of what's needed. Black educators need to know that the district administration will support their efforts and come to their full-throated defense when they're under attack. We were assured that the district began implementing last December 21st a retention plan to support and retain black educators, but we've seen no details on this plan and no progress reports on its implementation. Since we are now seeing an exodus, we are forced to conclude that the district can talk the talk but can't or won't walk the walk.
We will move on to our action items, our consent agenda. Candace?
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, and separations, resolution for the dismissal of an educational support staff, approval of May 2018 board and committee meeting minutes, destruction of April 2016 closed session audio recordings, April 2018 list of bills, treasures, report, budget amendment, gifts to Lincolnwood and Kingsley, the Willard School Summer Project, FY19 food service satellite meals program contract, IDOT hazard approvals for FY19, FY19 click insurance renewal premium payment, FY19 self workers compensation renewal premium payment, FY19 prevailing wage resolution, FY19 working cash fund transfer resolution, and the annual safety survey.
Second. Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillpern?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Karthah?
Yes.
May I interrupt?
Please do.
With that vote, thank you very much, the board approved the appointment of three outstanding new administrators for the district. And it's my pleasure to introduce them because they're here, some with family members tonight. I start off with our new executive director for Black Student Success, Dr. Latasha Green, who is our current principal at Dawes Elementary. I haven't given you guys this warning, but we're going to ask you to say a word or two in a minute. Just go in there. But I can do the, if you'd like, if not. Dr. Green, Latasha is a fabulous educator, has spent time as a principal in Chicago Public Schools, led the significant turnaround of Marquette Elementary School, is eager to focus and does focus on instruction, instruction, and instruction in the service of outcomes, outcomes, outcomes. And when we went through the process, and it was a very important process that engaged community members, Latasha as well, we had several fabulous candidates. And Latasha stood out as an outstanding candidate to lead this work, to work with us, work with the community, work with all of us as we focus on improving outcomes for black students. Dr. Green, would you like to say a word? I'm going to put you on the spot. Latasha, you have to come to the microphone. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Goran, and Cabinet and Board. I would just like to say that I'm excited for the opportunity. I think that what is motivating me most is seeing some of the work that we were able to star at Dawes this year, and just looking forward to continuing that and making sure that it's apparent and reflective throughout the district for student achievement, but specifically for African-American students.
Thank you very much, and welcome. And we will be working immediately on the interim principal for Dawes, and Dr. Green is going to be working directly with Dawes as we move forward. It's my pleasure to introduce the new director of the JEH Early Childhood Center, Ms. Sharon Sprague. Sharon is a fabulous educator, number two, who has experience as a teaching artist, has worked directly in early childhood education as an interventionist, is a keen supporter and understander, is what I was going to say, of data and how to use data actually to drive improvement. And most importantly, is a natural early childhood educator. So as we listen to the other colleagues talk tonight about the importance and the excitement of social-emotional learning and academic growth and developmentally appropriate growth during our interview process, Sharon really stood out well. She's a former Evanstonian. Her children went to Oakton, Schut, and ETHS, and we welcome Sharon to the District 65 family. And if you want to say a word, you're more than welcome.
Well, I just want to start by saying I am so excited to be here. I'm excited for the opportunity, and I really enjoyed hearing the words of our teachers at JEH, and I look forward to taking up the work with all of you so that we can improve outcomes, and for all, right? So we're looking for equity, leveling the playing field, and making sure we're doing it in the most developmentally appropriate ways possible. So I really enjoyed hearing your desire to develop this and work together as a team, and I look forward to doing that work with all of you for the service of our students.
You're welcome. And it's indeed my pleasure to introduce the new principal at Bessie Rhodes, Ms. Carrie Mendez. Carrie also has wonderful experience, eight years as a principal. She worked with the Chicago-based Academy for Urban School Leadership, as has Dr. Green, on really focused ways of doing instruction and ways that yield results, which is the coolest thing. It's a very focused way. She's been an outstanding teacher and instructional coach, and really came across in the interviews both with us as well as with the team at the senior level, as well as with the community, as being a teacher at heart. And that's the most important piece as we move forward at Bessie Rhodes. Carrie's an Evanston native, and so in some ways is coming back home, and we appreciate that, and we want to welcome you back home to District 65. And I will admit, this is totally unfair because I didn't give you guys warning, so I owe you one.
All right. Thank you so much to the entire team, Dr. Goran and the Cabinet. I just want to thank all of you that came out. It's so amazing to me and just to see the outpouring of support from the community and just the interest and the investment, making sure that the education of students in Evanston is the best that it can be. The outcomes are great for all students. I did attend Orienton, I did attend Haven. Those are some of the best years that I can remember in terms of education for myself. I look forward to being a part of the team here, and thank you for welcoming me on board.
We'll move on to the technology lease.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to sign property schedule number eight, the master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement dated June 1st, 2018, and all related documents with American Capital Financial Services Incorporated for the financing of the school district's lease of technology equipment in an amount not to exceed $2,010,000.
We discussed this last week. I don't know, does anybody have any additional questions or follow-up? All right, can we go ahead and take the vote? Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillpern?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. We'll move on to the approval of Title I school-wide assistance plans.
I move that the Board of Education approve the district's Title I schools to move to a school-wide funding model.
Second. Again, something we discussed last week. Does anybody have any additional follow-up questions before we vote? All right.
Cohen? Yes. Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillpern?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. And our final action item, the approval of the Head Start 2018-19 COLA application.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Head Start 2018-19 cost-of-living adjustment application.
Second. Are there any questions or?
No.
All right.
Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillpern?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Okay, now we will move on to our discussion items, the first of which is our Oakton School redesign topic.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm just going to quickly introduce the Oakton team. I have Principal Mr. Wayne Williams here, Assistant Principal Dr. Deborah Osher, and I believe Perry Hollins, one of the members of our Oakton team, is also going to join the presentation tonight. They're joining us in order to provide an update for the Oakton School redesign work, which essentially experienced its first year of implementation this year under the leadership of Dr. Osher and Mr. Williams. The entire school team has worked very hard to take on a new direction in learning and a new framing for a way to engage our students at Oakton. And so they're going to use this opportunity tonight to share that work and to share some early celebrations of the effort of the Oakton leadership and the Oakton team. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Wayne Williams, Principal at Oakton School. Again, Dr. Osher's with me. Perry Hollins is out there, as well as Robin Rumsey. There are two members of our Oakton planning team that teaches at our school. And so as we go to our next slide here, this is what we hope to talk about tonight. We're going to err on the side of brevity, move pretty quickly, and then we'll pause for questions at the end. If we're going too fast, just wave us down, and we'll slow it down. We're going to go through an executive summary, just recapping all that's happened. We presented to the Board almost two years ago now, and so there's a lot that's happened over the past three years. We're excited to share that. So we're going to go through it pretty quickly. Then we'll talk about the guiding principles and goals that we had for the work. We'll do a little bit of a recap of just this year, understanding it's just one year and a five-year process, and then we're going to talk about next steps, where we ended this year and what we hope to accomplish in the years coming forward. This is a recap of all that we endeavored to do and where we've landed thus far. So as you see, first, the redesign process was initiated by Dr. Goran back in 2015. It was one of the first things that he gave for us to do at Oakton. And the notion behind, or the rationale behind that redesign process had many prongs. The top three are listed here for you. Overall academic performance, how could we increase that at Oakton School? How could we increase enrollment in ACC? Because in recent years, it had declined significantly. And then a lack of cohesion amongst the three programs, because at Oakton School, we have three pathways. We have a non-magnet pathway, then we have TWE, and we also have ACC. This redesign effort was led by district administrators, school administrators, and teachers, again, some of which are here with us tonight. And then the team was charged with analyzing what program offerings could we come up with, what recommendations did we have for the Board and for our school that could accomplish those three things I mentioned earlier. And then, of course, engage the community, all of our teachers, the Board, in getting feedback about some of those recommendations. So here you'll see four of the main recommendations that's come out of the work to date. First recommendation from the team was that we did not dissolve any magnet programs. We kept ACC, TWE, and the magnet, non-magnet strand. That was a big undertaking and recommendation after our research that we're among very few, if any, elementary schools in our country that have two magnet programs plus a non-magnet strand in the same building. So it was a big undertaking, but our research showed that we needed to hold on to it to see what was going on. The second recommendation we made was that we needed 18 months to plan, and again, this started back in 2015, September. And so we wanted that time to really think about what needed to happen, ask some more questions, do some research, and then ultimately roll out in August 2017, which we did. The third recommendation was to think about what was the programmatic model that we would use that would also maintain the integrity of the magnet programs. There were lots of things that we considered, things like international baccalaureate, but of course, those things don't work out with some of the magnet programs that we had in the building. We wanted to honor the tenets of ACC and TWE. And so where we landed is that fourth recommendation. We needed to update our mission and vision, make sure it reflected 21st century thinking skills, and we did just that. And then we needed to talk about a pedagogical shift. I heard one of our speakers earlier talking about doing something different than what we've done before, and that's what the committee and the team landed with, moving towards project-based learning. It's not brand-new, exists in our world of education, but something that wasn't the primary focus in our current building. And then we needed something to anchor that, and STEAM is where we landed with the thematic focus, now our goals.
So just to recap and reviewing the goals that Mr. Williams already stated, the Oakton planning team was given the charge of these three bullet points: improving overall academic performance, increasing enrollment in ACC, and increasing cohesion between the three programs that currently exist, ACC, TWE, and the non-magnet strand. The goals mentioned on the previous slide correspond with these guiding principles. The goals mentioned will be achieved by creating one umbrella instructional focus, which we landed at project-based learning. PBL was selected due to its emphasis on relevant and real-world learning and the direct connection to culturally responsive teaching. We also wanted to note that research also shows us when students connect their learning to real-life experiences, they are more invested, and achievement is higher. We also know that culturally relevance, cultural relevance and responsiveness is super important and critical, given the demographics at Oakton. The planning team used the Buck Institute as a resource. Also, the Buck Institute at the bottom is a live link also to click on so that you can see more information there. We use this for our current working definition for project-based learning, which also states when students work on standard-based projects over a period of time typically integrated with multiple content areas to solve real-world problems or answer complex questions. Knowledge and skills are demonstrated by developing a public product or presentation for a real audience, also known to students as launching their project. The essential project design elements were developed. These eight elements are the elements that the Oakton team implemented this year. Again, I just want to state that all of the elements are used, and they piggyback on each other, but do not have to go in any specific order. They all build upon each other. Each element engages students along the way, and it is also important to note that several of these elements can be done multiple times throughout a single project.
So next, we have our project timeline. And so before I go through this, I just want to recap that this was a five-year process. So we started in September 2015 with just the initial charge from the district. And so we spent about a year just trying to answer some questions and doing research, such as, has ACC enrollment always been low? The answer was no. Strong enrollment at district average, class-size-wise. And so we need to do some more research. Is ACC performing, if ACC is performing poorly, what about TWE? How are those outcomes? Again, some very interesting information that came from that. As I mentioned earlier, magnet schools, two magnet strands in one elementary school. We again need to do some research and see how unique is this experience? And we found that in many ways, Oakton is super unique. And so that's where we spent our year one. Year two, we moved into the planning. So what you see here is year three, what's from August 2017, and as you look at our timeline, it's divided by trimester. And if you see, you'll see that first professional development is what the big focus was for this year. Our first trimester was really all about PD. What is PBL? What is unit planning? And then spending time planning as we learned about it. You'll also see that our focus, the thematic focus for PBL, and again, we've talked a lot about STEAM. STEAM is a thing that got a lot of attention in our building, in the community, but it was really about project-based learning, and STEAM was our thematic focus. And as an Oakton planning team, we recognized our error. We had talked too much about STEAM and needed to back up and make sure everyone understood what the real meat of the work was. With that said, math was what we focused on for trimester two, and then engineering is what we focused on for trimester three. Also, you'll see that we did a lot of piloting and action research along the way, taking the pulse of our community. One example is that we have lots of programs at Oakton and lots of full programs. One of the programs that we constantly have a waitlist, that's just a big push from our community, was anything attached to STEAM. As we talked to our parents and so forth, they constantly said this is something that's an interest for our kids, and we recognize it fills a hole for their future. And so we were like, this was a no-brainer to move in there. One thing in our timeline that we didn't make as much ground as we'd like, and that was on the family and community engagement. A lot of that was in a one-way path of inquiry, we were providing information and so forth. So as a planning team, we recognized that was one piece on our timeline that we didn't realize as we had hoped, but we're super excited that everything on there, everything else, I should say, we nailed. Here, we have some artifacts, some of which we won't show in the interest of time, but what you'll see is that second grade, we just want to do a case study of that group. We rolled this out with every grade level, and what you'll see is, again, from trimester two from our previous slide, it was all about professional development and planning. So what I'm going to do is show you quickly a project outline from second grade, if I can access it really quickly. I'm a math person, so this is not going to work for me. So Dr. Bridges is going to help me out. That's not going to work either. So as she's pulling that up, what you'll see is that there is. And she's pulling it up, what you'll see is this is an actual project outline from our second grade, and you'll see that those teachers walk through the process of planning together, learning what unit planning would look like, and then spending some time pulling that together for their entire grade level. They manage with flea market, and we want to be really clear, PBL is not our activity, it's still staying in the surface. And so when they looked through their data, they realized that the kids really struggled with measuring the dates. Why had they built a second grade? Well, it depends on what the kids struggle with. They were struggling with money. So if we understand our comparable standards, money stops the second grade, understanding the environment, and so forth. And so as a second-grade team, super sharp, said, hey, our babies have to really understand that. We move forward in the third, that's not a standard that exists in that way. It still happens in the border problems and so forth, but they really have to be able to understand what that means, they change, and so forth. So what other product or other item they realized was that social studies, the notion of economy and borrowing and trading and sales was another thing that totally was not solid at second grade. So they managed the flea market, not a difficult people.
Yeah, sorry. It's the links there, but it's not coming up. I apologize.
No worries. Silly cakes commercial, that's a video that we have, and we'll find a way to share it out with you, that the kids also recognize the notion of planning and letting everyone know what their products were going to be that they sold. And one product that every kid made was a silly cake that they actually created in their art class. And so they spend time thinking and writing about what is our product that we have to sell? Why is that important? And then after the commercials together that they put out, and they shared with the community before the flea market, so that when you came to the flea market, you'd already think of commercials, and you were able to be prepared to buy the items they were preparing to sell. Again, real-world application for activities and products and projects, I should say, that line up with what they need to work on. Trimester three, we moved into engineering. Engineering is elementary, is instructional materials that we used across our building, first grade through fifth. With second grade, catching the wind and designing sails is what they worked on. Again, in the interest of time, you'll see the demonstration video we won't show tonight, but you'll see two students talking about their design. They were given some very simple materials. They were charged with using all of their design and engineering and what they know about wind and science and air to develop their own sailboat, and we wanted to see if it would propel itself across the room. The students were very able to articulate their entire design process and realize how that work would apply for their real lives as second graders. So again, I'll find a way to share that video out. It actually, it may be already on our Facebook as far as schools. You should check it out. You'd be amazed at what our babies are able to do. Or actually, you shouldn't be, because they're Oakton Cougars. Another exemplar that we have is our seesaw. When you look back at our timeline a couple of slides back, you'll see one of the very few new things we did was introduce seesaw, and it's just a simple way for making our product public. So if you remember, Dr. Osher mentioned earlier that that's a main focus of project-based learning. So it's not old-school science fair. Project-based learning says that I designed something, I make it, I put it out for public product so that people can give me feedback before I'm done. Old-school science fair was, I did something, come look at what I did. Project-based learning says, I seek feedback from my intended audience. I take that feedback and I revise it, and then I bring it back out there again. Seesaw is very much like Facebook or a social media platform, love or hate it. It's a beautiful way to really put your stuff out there, get feedback. Our babies only got feedback from kids in their class and their parents, but those postings and those comments gave them some opportunity to revise their work. And again, this is a work in progress, and again, if you talk to most of our parents at Oakton, you'll see some of the things or hear about the things that their babies posted. And the power, student voice and choice that Dr. Osher mentioned earlier, the kids decided what they wanted posted, what they were proud of, what they wanted feedback on. Again, a pedagogical shift that we grappled with at Oakton School. Lastly, I want to call up one of our teachers, Mr. Hollins, just to have a teacher testimonial about what this experience was like for him as a teacher and a member of our Oakton planning team. Perry Hollins.
So thank you for this time. So for me, one of, it was a complete buy-in from the beginning when it was first announced. Me being on the Oakton planning team, I was gung-ho because I was like, this is the direction we need to go. Because one of the things that stood out in my mind as far as serving children of color was this idea around engagement and empowerment. They come in with a lot of success in terms of their ability and what they see themselves as, and it's always been a struggle in the past to get them to a point where they're just as engaged in the process as I am. And with project-based learning, I found that it alleviates a lot of that because so much of it is student-driven. Now, where does that put the teacher? I had to take a step back at some points, and I've realized, I was like, well, this is the work of project managers. So I started to come and look at it through that lens, and so you have these projects that students are working on, and it's all outcome-driven. So it's always the idea of going back, okay, why are we doing this? And that reiteration of why are we doing this keeps them focused, and it's also an opportunity for mini lessons and using the workshop model, which, you know, I think is essential because it allows us the opportunity to practice the skill, and then they go out and try it, and then they're motivated to try it because there's real-world outcomes that there, there's a real-world product that they're putting out there. One of the projects that we worked on this year was around looking at the writing curriculum and using feature articles as a way to explore the South, the region of the South. And when they explored the region of the South, it came through the lens of the Great Migration. So there's the connection that they had with, you know, their own engagement around their own family and things of that nature. So they started off with a project on interviewing family members that were from the South, and so then that led to the state that they chose. And then through that state, they looked at, we brought in the social studies curriculum as well, and so they were looking at it through multiple lenses. They looked at their state through a geographer's lens, they looked at it through a political They looked at their state through a geographer's lens, they looked at it through a political science lens. So they was really engaging in that way for them and also very analytical, because they are looking for certain things as they're researching. So all information isn't important. Um, and so that was one way to kind of get them thinking more and more about literary analysis, which we've spent a lot of time talking about this year as well. Um, so for me, I, I was completely bought into this notion. And it was something that I have tried in the past on a micro level, but now that it was across the school, I was like, okay, here's an opportunity for me to, um, to practice this, you know, in real time and inhabit the support of administrators as well. But I also realized that all of my colleagues aren't at that point. And so I think what we need to do is be respectful of that and also promote that as well. You know, we have an opportunity, be, you know, from my own vantage point, I saw more of a student-led environment, which I've always tried to create and promote in the classroom. Um, and so for me, that's, that was my, that was my push. And, you know, but I, I, I think that looking at teaching in a different way is sometimes, um, difficult, you know? And you're, you're asking teachers to make choices in real time that have accountability attached to it. And so there's a little bit of apprehension around that as well. So I just want to be cognizant of my own personal story and also making sure that we realize that everyone of my colleagues aren't at that level. But, um, from my own vantage point, I think it's a step in the right direction. So I hope that makes sense. I didn't want to ramble.
Hollins, so as we close, we want to show you a little bit of our student achievement from this year. We want to be clear from our timeline, the achievement we're showing you is a reflection of lots of work over many years. We just started our work with PBL, so by no means are we saying anything that you see tonight is a soul or, um, reflection of just that. With that said, um, let's talk a little bit about our readings.
So I'll talk a little bit about reading, and anybody that knows me, that, this is my favorite part, the, the data piece. Um, so a couple of things just to highlight in our map, um, SY18 map reading. Uh, the data shows the percentage of students meeting college readiness rose 2.6%. The percent of students making expected gains rose by 17.4%. Here's my favorite. The percent of students making expected gains at Oakton exceeded the district average by seven percentage points. I'm just gonna say that again, exceeded the district average by seven percentage points. And lastly, the percent of black students achieving college readiness rose 6.7%.
And so the beauty continues. Um, when you look at our math on the opposite side, um, our college readiness and the percent of students, I should say, meeting that rose 4.1%. And then when we look at the, um, percent of students making expected gains in math, that rose by 10.7%. Um, and that has us with over half of our students making their expected gains. That's not even where, where we need to be, but we are excited about that. Um, this next one's a big deal. The percent of students making expected gains in math at Oakton is on par with the district. So we exceeded the district in reading, we're on par in math. And one of the exciting parts for me is that looking at, um, Oakton's data coming in, um, I can't remember a time where we were on par or above district average. That's just with me looking through it, not going into, for the 103 years the school's been there. But what I will say is that our teachers and our students and our parents should be very proud, extremely proud. Um, let's look at that last point. The percent of black students achieving college readiness rose by 8.7%.
So sticking with, uh, student achievement, um, for reading, um, meeting expected gains in reading, the percentage of students in fourth and fifth grade in ACC at Oakton exceeded District 65 students and black students in fourth and fifth grade district-wide. So you can see that where I'm referring to the bottom quadrant there of, uh, ACC, fourth grade, 60%, fifth grade, 45.5%.
Um, as we look at math, again, I want to take one step back and make sure we understand how this is laid out. The numbers, um, in our first rows were District 65, that's overall District 65. Where it says black students, again, those are black students across the district. And then of course, ACC refers to the students in ACC, recognizing that we have more than just black students in our ACC program, although the vast majority are African-American students. With that said, looking at our black stu-, our students in ACC, for sec- third grade, we're just under the, um, district average with math. But with fourth and fifth grade, check those numbers out. Again, we exceeded district and we exceeded the average for black students across the district. So our next slide is, um, our DRA results, and that's reading for K2. So as we mentioned at the outset, there were some mixed results. We had super strong for third through fifth grade. For K through two in reading, they weren't as strong as we saw with our other, other data. Um, we look at third grade, third grade is, um, again, our shining amazing star. We have 80% of those students achieving the grade-three benchmark. So that means every race, all students, 80% of them are right where they're expected to be. They're an amazing, amazing set of students that I think model who Oakton is and who Oakton will be. Um, I can't wait to see what these kids are gonna do. They scare me. Um, they're so amazing. Um, all of our kids, all of them are, but this third grade cohort is amazing. Um, when we look at the next, um, small increase in the percent of third grade students, um, achieving benchmark over the previous school year. Um, look at the next two bullet points, they really, um, highlight some areas for opportunity for us to work on. There was a decrease in the percent of students making their benchmark by grade, um, K through second as compared to the year before. Um, and there was a decrease in observed groups, um, from kindergarten, um, based on kindergarten readiness. So we look at kids who come in that are ready versus students who the initial assessment says they're not really ready for Kinder. And we didn't see a vast difference between their performance. Both of those groups, though, the performance could be a little bit better, but we're excited about, um, working with that group, because we saw what we can do, um, once we have a little moment with them. Um, so we want to close with next steps. Let's talk a little bit about what we want to start moving into the next couple of years. We want to start by and then campaign to increase student enrollment in ACC. Of those initial three bullet points, that's not something that we've done a whole, whole lot of work. We've done some preliminary things and we want to turn that up to, um, a fever pitch. Um, there are lots of great things that we've done and we've managed some really strong, stable enrollment, but we want to increase that. Another thing we want to start is to make sure that we develop and implement STEAM units that hit the other items or the other elements of STEAM. Again, from our initial slide, we did work with math, we've done a focus on engineering. So we want next year to focus on science, technology, and then the arts. We also want to do real site visits. Our Oakton planning team did virtual tours of schools around our world. Um, that's, you know, it's online and pretending we were there. Um, but we want to really get in, um, a helicopter, if, um, Dr. Goran will play for it, and, uh, go visit some amazing spaces around the, um, the country to see some of the great work that's happening that mirrors what we're trying to do at Oakton.
So as you can see, there are very few things, obviously, just one, that we're going to stop. The Oakton planning team, um, initially met separately, um, then, then our school improvement team, they were separate, and they do overlap in many areas as our school improvement teams, uh, plan professional development, look at data and kind of roll things out to the school. Um, so we are going to start meeting together and doing some joint work, um, as, for the upcoming school year. Obviously, we want to continue professional development, super important across the board. Not only the great things that are happening here, but obviously that are research-based and that places that have experienced, uh, PBL and project-based learning, um, see what's going on and also bringing that back to our own school. Um, obviously cultivate and develop community partnerships is super important. Uh, we currently have some community partnerships. We want to continue to strengthen those and increase, um, more partnerships as we continue in data analysis and action planning as we move forward for SY19.
So what questions or comments do you have?
Turn to our board here. Does anybody have? Thank you very much. The presentation was incredibly informative and exciting. Um, and so I'll turn it to my board colleagues. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Oh, maybe, just, just a couple. Um, first of all, thank you for sharing the work. Uh, a couple of things that I just want to reiterate, because for the sake of, uh, using your own words, um, it's helpful for us. You gave several reminders that this was a long-term plan. Um, you're, you've emphasized that change takes time. And, um, you're only halfway through it, right? And one of the things that you've identified in your stop, the one bullet in your stop is to stop meeting separately with your planning team. And I think as a, as a manager of change, I think it's really awesome to see that growth. You probably started with the people who were ready for it in that planning team. And you've, I mean, we heard you talk about, you've identified that you've seen in other people where they're at, and now you're ready to merge into that school improvement process and mediate that change with everybody as a collective body, and that's pretty cool. So that's, that's awesome. And then you got to check out CISA One in Wisconsin, which is not far away, because they're all over this. And you can get in a car and not a helicopter. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to applaud not only the results, which are obviously fantastic, but also the risk that you took, um, with the school over the past few years. Um, and that even if the results had been not as stellar, I think the risk is still worth publicly applauding. Um, I think it's really fantastic what you guys did. Thank you.
So I just want to congratulate you. I think this is really exciting work, and I know that there's been a lot of, uh, blood, tears, sweat that has gone into this work. So, um, I, this is amazing and outstanding. I know that Oakton has been one of our schools that has struggled a lot. Um, and to see these results, um, is really just, I think, validating for the, for the school itself, that, that is always hard at work. Um, and, uh, it is very challenging to have three schools under one roof and to meet the needs of each individual student. Um, it's so exciting to see the world connection that's being made through project-based learning. It's something that's happening around the globe. We see it a lot in, in India. And so it's really exciting, um, to hear teachers excited about this, this model. But most importantly, I think with, um, the changes in technology and just the reach of our, of our kids to be able to get hands-on experiences. And, um, it's, it's really exciting. Um, and also thank you for including the arts, because I think that, uh, Oakton is also a, a school of artists, and I think that our kids learn so much through the arts. So it's a really great connection, and I'm really excited to, to have seen that included. So, thank you.
Well, I'll echo the thanks. Um, I think it starts with, with all of you, but extends to, I think, quite frankly, everybody in this room for, um, the continued push, as Mr. Hollins put it, of, you know, what do we have to do to invest to, in ACC but in broader Oakton, um, to, to really fulfill on the promise that was, has been made a long time ago, and we're still working on that. So one of my questions would be, and it's, um, really to us, is how do we ensure an ongoing resource investment in this work and so that it can extend, you know, um, continue the implementation, but extend from there? And we, as a board and the administration, need to keep sight on that, because clearly that was one of the flaws in the past, um, that there weren't appropriate resources put to, uh, a, a promise. So, thank you for, for start, starting to deliver on that, and we need to make sure it continues. I have, the, the early results are, are amazing. I have one question as to, because of the three programs, as to whether we have any data relative to, um, our English language learners or our Hispanic students too, is the trend similar in terms of, um, growth there? Uh, and if, if so, if you could, um, just speak to that.
So I can talk to that briefly. We are in the process of pulling together both the, the map data and the DR, uh, DRA data is still very recent. Um, what it can speak to the TWE results is that the TWE results are also, the two-way immersion results are also positive. Um, we see across, in MAP, when I look across the three grades that take MAP, third, fourth, and fifth grade in math, 45% of the students met that college readiness benchmark. I'm looking at the data right now as the TWE cohort as a, and then we have separate around EL. I would need to, can take another probably five minutes to look at that and pull it. But 45% of those kids met college readiness benchmarks, 59% of the students met the expected gains in math, and 26.7% were in that bottom quartile. All three of those are above the Oakton average, and as we saw, the Oakton average, in some cases, is outperforming the district average here. So strong positive initial results for the two-way immersion program as well. Um, when we look at reading, the very strong expected gains in fourth and fifth grade in TWE. We don't get expected gains in third grade with MAP, because we don't take it in second grade. So both of those, 75% and 68% with, so 72% of those TWE classrooms making expected gains. And when I look at MAP frequently, I look at expecting gains as the leading indicator. And that's one of the things that's really strong about the Oakton results, is when we see such a high percentage of kids making expected gains, that means that we sustain that over a couple of years, and that's when we really see the bump in college readiness benchmarks and things along those lines. So that is, that 71.8% for the TWE classrooms outperforms Oakton and outperforms the district. We are just below district average for TWE in the percentage of college readiness benchmarks and students in the bottom quartile. And so those are two areas in the same way that we need to go a little bit deeper, particularly in reading and the bottom quartile for our TWE classrooms.
Thank you. The other two questions I had, one, it actually relates to what Mr. Hollins said, and that is about, you know, um, educators are at different points on this journey, and this is risky. It's changing what you do, how you do it. It's basically letting more up to the students. And how can we, as a district, encourage that, support that, um, you know, smooth the, or I guess dampen the, the, the willing, increase the willingness to take those risks? So what can we do? What can we do as a district in addition to helping, you know, the change along? But, um, are there specific things that you guys have noticed that, that we need to state or say or whatever that, um, you know, I mean, because this is taking risk, right? And, and it's not always gonna end up exactly the way you want, you think it's gonna go, it's gonna end up differently. So how can we encourage that?
And you said it was a charge that you were given by Dr. Goran.
The charge Dr. Goran gave us was trying to figure something out. Where we landed, um, was from our team. Um, and so I think Mr. Hollins said it very well, is that our teachers aren't all at the same place with it. Um, you know, many are very excited, some are a little anxious. Um, I know a couple, um, which is like, oh, the data that we showed tonight is not just about PBL. And I said that very clearly before we got started. So I think one thing is honoring all the work, because I'm always very clear to say, we're standing on the shoulders of lots of work that happened before. Um, doors seem to be opening now, but somebody else beat on it before we got here, you know, and loosened it up, if you will. So I think honoring all the work along the way, I think, will be one step. Um, the second thing is celebrating, um, success and making sure that we honor, um, what progress looks like. I read an amazing article recently about measuring what matters, is what it was called. And so we showed a lot of the data points that administrators get excited about, because, you know, that's what we do. Um, but there are other parts of what matters that came out of this. Um, what I hear Mr. Hollins saying daily is the excitement and the energy that he gets. Like when I go into the room and see him having a moment, um, I think that's super exciting, make sure we celebrate that. So as a board, making sure that all of these wonderful data points, um, get celebrated on the level of the effort, um, you know, school climate things, um, there's just lots of pieces that need to be elevated as well. Um, a third piece, I think, would be sustaining the work. Um, a lot of people get nervous, because it shouldn't be about a person, you know? And so if, you know, one of us were to step away, um, we should make sure that there's still the support.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically speaking. Um, we want to make sure that it continues going. Um, at the end of the day, um, there's a lot of beginning work that started, and we want to make sure it continues. And so making sure that people have what they need to keep it going. And sometimes what they need is just presence, sometimes it's money, sometimes it's a helicopter. Um, but there's a lot of things that, you know, I needed to make that. You want to share?
I'll also agree with everything Mr. Williams said, plus the helicopter. But, um, just to also answer your question and to, also, your question also makes me reflect on the things that we can continue doing. Obviously, I, I love that Mr. Williams highlights the celebration piece. Um, we can't, um, emphasize them enough, just even celebrating small steps where, um, at times, people that have been in Oakton for quite some time have felt like, um, almost a sense that they didn't know how to celebrate. And so bringing that to the, to the, uh, service. And so bringing that to the surface, also to celebrate endless conversations that really can't be tracked of, you know, in, I'll give an example. In my office, many times, Ms. Rumsey and I, or Mr. Hollins and I, we spend hours and hours to talk after school about this work and get so excited, then we look up and it's like seven o'clock or eight o'clock, right? And so really, you know, getting excited about that and knowing how we can support our staff, because like Mr. Hollins mentioned, staff, all the staff members are in different areas. Some are excited and ready to jump in and say, hey, I'm going to give it a go, and whatever happens, let's make it happen. And then some are, I need a little bit more support. Can you come in? Can you help? I'm not sure. So also knowing our staff's needs, and also knowing, just like teachers know their students' learning styles, knowing our staff's learning styles, right? Being able to take our staff to different sites. Some of our staff said, I need to see it in action. I can read all their articles you give me. That does nothing for me. I need to be there and see it. So how can we provide those experiences to get them there and to really see work in action? And to, you know, provide them with as much support as they need so that when they encounter this work, that they feel successful.
Thank you very much.
If I may, the couple of things that have been really exciting and continue to be exciting is the organic way that the Oakton staff is jumping into this. So as we talk about risk, the charge was, let's do something. And then, let's do what we can do to support you, but also, let's not make this top-down. This has to come from the voice of teachers like Ms. Rumsey and Mr. Hollins and the excitement that you can see with Mr. Hollins presenting. Through that excitement will come what we hope is sustained results. And so part of the next charge is for us to both stay out of the way. Stop is, stop on any inclination towards something that is going to be severely top-down. And start and continue is around really building the momentum and building upon the momentum. I know Mr. Obafemi is looking at prices of helicopters right now while he's sitting there. But I think the idea of going to Wisconsin to visit other places and to really build upon the excitement that we have, and build about, around the organic interests of the staff and faculty at Oakton is making a difference and will continue to make a difference.
If I may, you know, it was the Friday before winter break, Dr. Goran, when we went to visit Oakton this year.
Right.
And I didn't know a lot about the redesign process. I hadn't met either of you before. All I knew was that the Friday before winter break is usually when the wheels are falling off the bus. And that's when we were coming to visit the school. And we wanted to see TWE, we wanted to see ACC, we wanted to see just the space. And you can feel the energy in you guys talking about the work that you're doing and how excited you are about it. And for 90 minutes we were there, we saw community engagement because the chessmen were delivering their holiday baskets. And that was crazy. And then we popped into a lot of rooms, and nobody, we didn't need anybody to acknowledge us, but nobody stopped because they were so engaged in what they were doing in the classroom. And that's an engaged group of teachers, that's an engaged group of kids. And that's, you know, taking those days that are usually a little wonky and making them meaningful is how you get more time, right? That's how you make the gains. So kudos to you guys for that. And that was nice for me to be able to go and see it, right? Because that's not a data point. That's the lived experience. Thank you.
So I just, you know, I'm going to echo what everyone has said about those results. These preliminary results are really exciting and echo what Candice said about, you know, we need to know, as we're talking, heading into budget discussions and whatnot, we need to make sure that we are continuing to support this work and supporting, you know, that we don't forget these results as we plan for the upcoming year. I was wondering if we could talk about a couple of things. I wanted to specifically talk a little bit more about ACC. And I know that, you know, for the next steps, I see the campaign to increase student enrollment in ACC. But I imagine that there's been some preliminary analysis and work done around, and to go back to your statement where you talked about, you know, looking historically, ACC was not always an under-enrolled program. So, you know, do you have any insights that you can share about, you know, what kind of, where we maybe lost support for ACC, what we as a district need to do? How can we better support the program? Because I think that was one of the things that we were really hoping to come away from from this discussion is ACC, we, you know, when I go to events, ACC events, you can see the family engagement, you can see the student excitement, the teacher excitement. So there's clearly something very special about the program. But it is consistently under-enrolled. So what do we need to do as a district to better support the program?
Wow, that's a big question. One thing I would say is that when parents come to visit our school, and I think someone else mentioned it tonight, that Oakton has a mystique that it's had for a while, and who knows why. And so when they come to visit, I'm always very clear about taking them to all classrooms. Usually when a parent comes, they know exactly what they want to see. My child will be coming into TWE in first grade, and that's all I want to see. And so after year one, it was very clear that Oakton is a multifaceted school, and even if you land where you think you want to go, you must see everything. And we had about seven to eight families just last year, just by that tour, going into the ACC classroom saying, whoa, I didn't know. And I tried to unpack why you didn't know. Sometimes it was a new family to the area. Sometimes it was like, I just saw it written somewhere, but I never followed up. And I think one of the things, to answer your question, is why, unpacking more why people don't know. Then when they go in, it goes to my statement earlier about celebrating, making sure that we measure what matters. All of those parents that went into the room, no matter what they had heard, some of them didn't know, some of them had heard it was only for black kids, or it was only for kids who were in trouble, all kinds of, you know, myths and rumors were out there. And when they went into the room, it was something you can feel, and there's not a data point we can put on it. And it's just a harsh reality. And so when we went in, these were parents who changed their mind and said, I want my kid in here. And I said, absolutely, not a problem. We can make that happen. And they've all been super excited about being there. And so I think another piece is trying to get to understand why people don't know. Secondly, making sure that we elevate things that can't be measured by a data point. Even this year, you know, Oakton had a really rough year, you know, a lot of bumps in the road, lots of leaves, and just things happened to staff that, you know, trickled down. But at the end of the day, more than I think even our staff realized, you know, what you witnessed is what was happening, you know? And so making sure that we elevate that as well, just putting that narrative out. Another piece, I think, is making sure we talk about the role that environment plays in a classroom and what ACC has to share about that. One of the markers with our PBL shift, we wanted to be a lab school. We wanted to really take STEAM and project-based learning on, and then let it be somewhere that other schools in the district, people come to us from Wisconsin and see what was going after we got it together. But with that said, I think ACC has a lot to share as it pertains to culturally relevant and response of teaching. And so even if class sizes never get back to where it was, and if it never matches district average, there is something there that already exists. Parents testify to it constantly, that can be a lab experience, even as a district, we're shifting to that. All of our teachers that have gone through BD will have that experience during Teacher Institute Week. Why are they not coming over to Oakton? They should be, that should be part of the tour, you know? And so those are a couple of things I think that could help. Dr. Osha.
Also, being in the school, in all the classrooms, we made it a point really to also focus on relationships. And I know that's something that sometimes goes under the radar when people are just thinking instruction, instruction. But you truly can't give solid instruction, let alone differentiated instruction, unless you know the students who are sitting in front of you beyond a surface level and beyond a data point. And so I know that there are many conversations with the ACC staff and other staff, but since we're focusing just on ACC, but constant conversation around a whole child experience and knowing the students at a deeper level. So I'm just going to highlight that part of just getting to know students more than just for a test score and digging a little deeper on students. Also, I think, setting aside some time, maybe with, to speak with ACC teachers to better support them. I can sit here and speak to what I think, but I think the teachers that have been there have been there for a while, and that they could also actively engage in a conversation about what they need as individual teachers in the ACC program.
Thank you. Well, I would push Dr. Goran and the team up here to really, I mean, these, looking at the test scores, you know, ACC versus the district averages, I mean, these are really, really positive trends. And that's something, I appreciate that, you know, looking at it as a, you know, kind of a lab perspective. But I also, I mean, I want to see these results across the board, particularly for our black students. So I think that, you know, we really need to think about, how do we take what, there's some really good success here. How do we better articulate that to our community and get people, not just black students, but all students, to consider ACC as a program? Do we consider an additional site for ACC? You know, I think that there is some additional analysis that we can do to figure out how. In addition, I do think absolutely we need to talk to ACC teachers and find out what supports they need. But I think we can do, you know, some other, like higher-level looking at the program, because clearly there is something that is happening that's very right in the program, and we need to try to replicate that. The other question that I had really quickly, and we may not be prepared to fully discuss this tonight, but I know on the continue with the community and family engagement and cultivate and develop community partnerships, I believe Oakton was designated as a site for community schools. And so I don't know if you can talk a little bit about that process, and we haven't really gotten much of an update on the community schools in general.
We're going to do it later tonight.
Okay. Forget that then. I mean, if you want to talk about it, you can. Otherwise, I can table that until we move on to it.
So just quickly, it was, we started mid-year, and so there were lots of opportunities we were kind of working through. We had support from Metropolitan Family Services. We had one staff member there one day a week that was trying to help us, you know, with our families and with just some parent support. And so it's definitely in the beginning stages at Oakton, just really leveraging that. To Dr. Osha's point earlier, Oakton is definitely a place about relationships and so forth. So introducing a new person and getting her in, and then it often took some of our staff members, our social worker, Ms. Bergman's here with us tonight, that was having to do that handoff, you know? And so that was a little bit, a little wonky, but we definitely appreciated that support, and it was super helpful. Helped, I think, just a few families, but that help went a long way. And so partnering with our amazing student support team and social workers, able to get some families some housing and, you know, some connections with some things. So it was a beginning process that we're looking forward to growing.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for this incredible presentation, for all this incredible work. Our next discussion topic is board planning for the next school year. As we begin this discussion, I had asked board members to just be prepared to discuss a couple of priorities that we want to see in the upcoming school year, understanding that there is a lot of work that's ongoing, and we don't want to be overburdening our already overworked administrators and teachers. So, does anybody have anything? I know one thing that we kind of started talking about last week that I think is something that we need to definitely have as part of the discussion early on for the next year is around finances and around, we have, from the generous support of our community, we do have referendum dollars that will sustain us for the next several years. But before we reach that crisis point again, to understand what are the pressure points, what are the priorities and the trade-offs we might need to make to be financially stable beyond the 2025 mark? So I know that's one thing that I think maybe will also inform the rest of our priorities discussion, quite frankly.
Can I jump in with just a few words of context before listening to you, the board? And as you give us your ideas, we are also, the senior teams, going into retreat at the end of the week to be able to sort of hone down the priorities, and then we'll come back as we have. So I really appreciate hearing your ideas. Couple things on context as we think about priorities. We have a lot of work underway right now. We're working on literacy. We're working on school climate and culture. We're working on culturally relevant pedagogy. We're working on equity in a deep dive, again, the report in the board package, and equity as it relates to improving student outcomes. We're working on school safety, as I suggested, and that wasn't just a one-and-done deal. That will continue on. And as Suni puts on the table, the financial sustainability piece as we think in the out years and how we manage our resources so we can do the right thing by our children and our families. So in many ways, and if I can encourage you, less is more. And we've heard that from a wide range of our colleagues, and that's whether it's our principals and administrative team, our teachers and support staff. We're doing a lot of work, and what we want to do is really focus on the work. So along with less is more, implementation matters. And again, this is the obvious, but we've got everything from school climate teams, again, culturally relevant curricula, to the work that we're doing school by school to improve our school improvement planning. And we really, we believe, I believe, that we should be paying attention to implementation. When we get to a focus, these focus areas, we also have to be thinking about what we're not going to do. And so I really appreciate the Oakton presentation, stop, start, and start, stop, and continue. We have to also create either a stop or a pause. Maybe a piece of our efforts go on hiatus for a year or two while we focus on relationships. Maybe a piece of our effort goes on hiatus while we work on the digging deep into the ACC. These are issues. And I do want to remind all of us at the table here, but in the audience and watching, that we are also entering into negotiations with our teachers and our teachers' union next year. And that's an important process that we will look forward to. And it does take a considerable amount of time from the October month through hopefully March or April or May or June. So the negotiations will be occurring. I do want to highlight one other piece that we've been, we have work underway, and it's an important piece, that I'll give you an update on work in progress that we committed to, and yet we still have more work to do. In our work plan, and this came out of the Equity Walk from a year ago, when Cory Wallace came in, she recommended, and we took on, the way to explore the recommendations around attendance boundaries and transportation inequities. And it's obviously a big issue, and something that we've talked about. Again, this is still a work in progress that will continue over the summer, that we'll address, we'll be working on to address the disproportion and the impact of busing on Black and Latinx students. So we have a bunch of things underway while we do this work. And again, this is the time to have the deeper dive to move forward. We've started an examination of historical documents that relate to busing and desegregation. This goes back to the foster school closing and the development of King Lab, the redistricting in the 1990s, the recent Fifth Ward referendum. And there's a considerable amount of materials that we're sifting through. We've done a literature review on school assignment, and again, that process of how does school assignment really work in districts around the country, and what are some of the key issues that we should be paying attention to? We have a research group that's doing some interviews of comparable school districts on how the issues of equity and student assignment actually intersect, or do they intersect? Again, a set of questions. And we're just, we're just receiving some data analysis from some students at the Kellogg School at Northwestern on the extent of the disparities in busing, where the load is for African-American students, where the load is for Latinx students, and what that really means. It's a lot of information. And we want to make sure, one, I don't want to stand tall with false promises. We need to actually do the deeper work on this to be able to come back to the board on those sorts of issues. And it begs a wide range of questions around our busing and desegregation policies. It also begs a lot of questions about our boundaries and the boundary work, and I can, I've done- I've done boundary work in two districts past, and changing boundaries takes a considerable amount of time and a several-year process to do it. It just not, doesn't happen overnight, and it, and quite frankly, it's a contentious process. We need to do the deeper work as been, has been implied and stated on our finances. What do our finances really look like over the next eight to 10 years? What do we see the, where do we see the district going? And then what can we really do? So no, we can't go get that helicopter, and, but what we can do is invest in our kids and then put our priorities where they, where they are most needed. So again, to do the type of work on this particular project, which is a really important one, and we've heard the voices from community, we've heard the voices from board, we've, we've worked on this, we do need to also, in a particular project like this, have somebody at the senior team who's devoted to it and actually has the time and the resources to do the work well, and if we have to hire consultants, we have to have the time and the resources to work with them so that we can consider what, how and what we should do as moving forward. I give this as one example. One, it's an update on something that was, is a deliverable that we're in process, and we will deliver a memo that sort of, that highlights where we're at and what we think might be some of the next steps over a multi-year period. Again, not in the spirit, in the spirit of not giving a false promise, over a multi-year period, what might be possible and what can we do? And that fully brings us back to your conversation on priorities. Less is more, implementation matters, student outcomes matter. And again, I think what Mr. Williams, Dr. Osher, and Mr. Hollins show, Ms. Ramsey, is that over time, with a concerted effort, things can change, and we can change for the good. So how do we actually pay attention to that as we focus on student outcomes? So with that, I leave, leave the conversation to you to brainstorm the issues that you think fit within that context.
All right. Any takers to start?
I'll go.
All right.
And I'll frame these thoughts as a continuation, because I don't think any of this is new, so it's meant in the spirit of not start, but continue. So a couple of thoughts that I've had is, one, you know, early childhood, part two, which is, you know, the continuation of the, actually building the action plan and the work that, that is a natural, I think, outgrowth of what we saw previously. And for me, a particular focus around alignment pre-K to, to, or, you know, the alignment early childhood to, to the early grades in elementary, which I would suspect is also on others' lists. The second thing I think of is, is a look at, and, you know, I will say assessment, but I think it's assessment light, of the curricular and programmatic changes that we have made in the last year, year and a half, so, you know, the new courses and getting a look at how those are going and what the outcomes of those being advisory, the STEM courses, SEAL courses, the implementation of Math 6, 7, and mixed-level algebra, I think just understanding how that has gone and what the outcomes are bringing and the trajectory going forward. So again, it's not new, but it's obviously looking at how, how that's fared and where we're going from there. And then the third piece, you said two or three, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the third one is really a joint piece with ETHS, and I brought this up at the last joint meeting. I do think we need to look at what's the future of the joint literacy goal, and how are we going to support that going forward as, you know, for both districts? So this is the three that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll start backwards on my list, because the last one I have is actually similar to Candace's, and I'm not sure if it's exactly the same as the joint literacy benchmark, but having some ETHS readiness goals that our students are measured against to ensure that we're making a very smooth transition and having them be as successful as possible. I know we talk about college readiness, and that's what the generally accepted criteria is, but there's a long way between eighth grade and college, and I think it would help us better understand the effectiveness of our programs and our programmatic changes if we had a better understanding of how kids are landing in ninth grade.
And the second point that I have is really about the emotional well-being of our students and staff and being able to have a monitor in place that we can check in on at various intervals throughout the school year. That, you know, I think that, there's a lot of work that we can do as far as Alice training is concerned with, you know, active shooter drills, but I think being able to try and create environments in our schools that ensure our children aren't ostracized in any way, and being able to identify when students are, and being able to mitigate that as effectively as possible is incredibly important. I also think it's, would be good to have a handle, a better understanding of our staff and how they're feeling, and making sure they feel supported and that we can see that at our level.
So I definitely don't want to add anything to the workload. I think that we definitely have more than, more than enough on our plate, but I think that we, one of the, one of the things that I hear around the equity work, that as challenging as it is, it's been really refreshing and nice to have it be the thing that we're working on, and I think that this is the longest initiative that many of us have seen in this district. So although it is hard and challenging and has pushed us very much so, I think it's the one thing that we can continue to do, especially in, in regards to, one, the presentation that we heard tonight about ACC and our black student achievements, but also, I think, into how do we, how do we ensure the efficacy of our TWE program in the school district? And work with the high school in preparing our, our TWE students to excel there as well in the gap that we have for our middle school students for TWE. I think I've already expressed several times our need to, you know, as Candace and Lindsay have stated with our early childhood work, I think that that's something that we really are on the, on the cusp of really getting into, and I just, I'm looking forward to the next coming year, really strengthening that program and making a solid connection between early childhood and kindergarten. And finally, this idea around the wellness of our district and the emotional well-being, as Lindsay has stated, of our teachers and our students, and how we connect, how we connect those, those things to environmental sustainability and the work that we're doing through the city of Evanston, and how we can work, work together in collaboration with a lot of initiatives that are going on in the city, one, around environmental sustainability, but two, also around the arts and what this, what this, this city really does stand, stand behind. There's been, you know, we haven't really talked a lot about the, the arts curriculum or the hands-on possibilities for, for STEAM in our, in our curriculum, so I would really love to get more into that. But again, I think that we have a lot on our plate already, and I think that we've done a really good job this year, and I look forward to the continued work in, in the coming year.
Appreciate it. All great ideas, I think, coming off of that, this will sound pretty dry, but the biggest thing that we could do in this upcoming year is get a respectful and fiscally sound contract for our teachers, something that they feel good about, something that we feel good about in terms of the long-term finances, but that is obviously a big thing, not only financially, but it's a big thing in terms of culture and climate and the engagement process around that. So I would, I would put that above a lot of the other work, but it's also in a different bucket of work. And then, like many of you have stated, I think the early literacy goal, you know, I think Dr. Figlio probably got the backend of my SAS at our joint meeting, but I do think that looking at college persistence is a little too far away when, when we're trying to look at early literacy goals. And while I, I respect the research process, I think there is a rare opportunity with a new, with all new leaders when they come in, so start with our, our new leader, J E H, to do an audit, audit of our early childhood center. And in that first year is when you can come in and learn and give raw feedback without, you know, not, not without care, but you can structure it in a way that is honest, and you're new and learning, and you can ask questions, and it's, it's different. I think this upcoming year, I want to see a space for our new executive director of Black Student Success to have a voice, where she can not only engage the community, but also give us feedback about, and the cabinet feedback about how the system needs to change or where the system is working, because the position, positions are great in idea, but they're only great if they're executed well, right? And the space has to be there to be able to sometimes say even to your supervisor, the system needs to change this way, right? And I think that's really important.
I will also say that, for the most part, everything that I could identify as priorities is really just continuation of the work that we're doing. So for example, on the equity and school climate work, you know, we talked about the discipline policy and dress code and updating those and implementing those, so, you know, I think those are obviously important to continue on. And the equity professional development, I agree with Rebecca, this is something that is important. I think we've heard feedback that it's, that even though it can be challenging, it's, it's something that is necessary and that, that needs to continue, but we've also heard feedback that we need to provide the space for people to be able to collaborate and, and reflect on, and, and how the, the equity trainings are going to actually be implemented in classroom practice. So making sure that that, I think, you know, if we're talking about like trade-offs of where are we going to continue, where are we going to pause, I think, to the extent that we can pause to allow for that space, that, allow that space for those discussions to happen is really important. And then also, just when we're thinking about school climate in particular, I think highlighting Bessie Rhodes with the, the transformation that that school is going to be undergoing and getting some sort of updates or, or understanding of how that is, is going. Early childhood, the only thing I would add to what's already been said is, as we're looking at that K through, pre-K through three alignment, also looking at the assessments that we're using and how we're going to maybe incorporate, as we heard from some of our early childhood teachers, talking about the importance of the social and emotional learning, and so how are we going to incorporate that and assessment of that into our kindergarten readiness and then just general, like, early childhood readiness and successes. And then looking really specifically at instruction for our more marginalized students, what the, what the data is showing us, our, our students who we are typically not serving as, as highly as we could. So looking at black students, and again, I think, you know, lifting up ACC and really doing a dive into what's working there and how do we expand the learnings beyond the ACC classroom, or maybe even expand ACC and TWE. We talked about how, once we've got through the, adding the strands that we would, would look at, TWE doing, TWE through, into middle schools, so how are we going to do that? And then one thing that we talk about, and this may be the one thing that is, I think, not new for the work that you guys are doing, but maybe new for us at a board level to get a report on, is looking at special education in particular, because I think that's another one where we look at our data, is, is students that are not performing as well as we would like them to. And I know there's going to be a lot of overlap between special ed students and, and students of color, but is there something, you know, I don't know that we've really looked at the, you know, the inclusion model and what we're doing. We never, we still have the policy, but we've never really updated it in a number of years, so if there's space to do a deeper dive into special education, I think that would be something that could be worthwhile to look into.
Thank you. So what, what we will do, these are always important moments to, to put all these issues on the table, and then we'll actually scan what we're doing and where, where we see the work happening, and then what the parameters are, and then we'll come back, and we'll come back with a game plan.
And, you know, as I think, you know, when, when we've had discussions, to just, you know, these are the things that, that we are highlighting, but we need the honest feedback from you and your team on what is manageable.
Yep. And we'll, you know, continue and stop and
Yeah.
Put on hiatus, I think is going to be our, our, our mode of operating.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Move on quickly to board committees and school liaisons. Unless anybody, I, nothing has changed for anybody, so unless somebody wanted to change a committee appointment or a liaison, we will continue on as we have the past year.
Well, the one thing, I mean, we don't have the community schools initiative, so is that going to go away?
Um.
Or, or maybe that's to the point, maybe I'm misspeaking, but.
No, I think.
Well, we can give you the update on community schools, and then the question is whether or not there are, it necessitates liaisons is an interesting.
Okay.
And then the only other, we have right now listed, and I'm the representative for the external advisory council, I don't know that that really exists anymore, but I do think it would be helpful to have one or two board representatives on Delt to highlight the importance of the equity work, and that, that is something that the board is committed to, so I think we should consider, instead of the external advisory council, having...
I think that's something to discuss. Typically in Delt across the country, board members are not involved, so it's a, it's a larger issue. Do I have that right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm curious, why? I mean, is there...
I think typically when you involve the board, the conversation between staff changes, and I think it respects the role that staff have vis-à-vis the board, and so I think it would probably be most effective for the Delt to not have board members on it.
Okay.
There, I mean, there might be processes that we could consider of the board members periodically checking in at Delt or having
Yeah, if maybe there's some way
Some way to do it, but I think the membership piece, as Peter says, we, we want to, it goes back to actually to Rebecca's point, we've made such important progress in building trust around equity, and we got a lot more to do, and, and so how we move forward on that is worth considering.
Okay. Well, then, if we can consider how the work that the Delt is doing and the equity work that we're doing is clearly something that the board is highly invested in, so how we can have some sharing, you know, if, I can respect if the board can't be on the committee, that's fine, but, but I think we do need to have, I don't know, something where we can, can show our investment into the work and, and our support of it and, and hear from, from, from the committee on what's happening, so maybe if it's up periodic reports, I'm not sure how that will work, but that's something we can talk about. Anything else?
There is mention of the possibly restarting the wellness committee?
Yes.
And is that, is that some, I know that
Voice, do you have any information on that?
Yes. We had had some difficulty in finding some people to, you know, chair it, but we do have people that both Mary Larson and Kate Mason Schultz have identified, so we are going to start that up, and I need to get their names, but for the fall, that's a plan.
And will there be, previously there was a board member on the committee?
Yes. Yes. If somebody would like to be a part of that, I will let you know.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Okay?
I was going to say, we don't, this wouldn't be anything new, but I know the high school includes who is involved with Cradle to Career, and we've always had, you're still involved. But maybe we want to just add it to the list
Okay, that makes sense.
So that folks know what board members are, are involved in, actively involved in Cradle to Career.
Okay. That makes sense. All right. And then I'm assuming school liaisons, everyone is okay with their... All right, then we'll go on to committee reports. I think Anya is our head start, early childhood, so I don't know that we have or... is our Head Start Early Childhood, so I don't know that we have. Or Joyce, do you have?
Katrina's here.
Oh, excellent. Do we have?
Katrina, yahoo!
Good evening.
Hi.
Everyone doing well? Great.
Hello.
So the biggest update is COLA. We submitted the application today. We also have pre-service training that's going to be in the month of August. This year, we've done a lot of work around anti-bias education. We had a pilot project with two teachers from Head Start, Early Head Start, and our delegate agency. And you heard some of the teachers talk about it today. It was a really good pilot project. And now they're interested in having the family support staff participate and potentially another group of teachers. So we will be talking with the trainers tomorrow to decide how to move forward for next year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katrina.
Now, when I tried to jump the gun on before, the community schools update.
I keep lunging. I'll just give a quick update on where things are, because it has been a year of transition. And so I know you guys haven't gotten an update in a while. So after we discussed with our partners at YOU about them wanting to shift out of the community schools partnership model, we applied for and received a $50,000 grant through Evanston Cradle to Career to help us basically bridge, transition, regroup, relaunch. So we're greatly appreciative of that. We've worked on examining the model that had been in pilot mode in a couple of schools over the last couple of years, and thinking about how to leverage the most impactful parts of that model. So really focused on building up external partnerships to bring more wraparound services into schools, that being the piece that had the most positive feedback and was seeming to have the most traction, and wanting to really focus on that. So to that end, with the grant funds, we've hired a new resource coordinator who's starting later this month. We've made plans to expand to Oakton as a third site, so SHUT, King Arts, and Oakton. As Mr. Williams mentioned, the work just really starting, since we haven't got that staff person onboard yet. We launched a few new partnerships. The Moran Center has been providing legal clinic services for families at all through schools. And so they have a wide range of services they provide. They've recruited a whole staff of, I think, 20-plus legal and nonlegal volunteers to provide that. And they've already started providing those services in the spring, and the clinics will continue through the summer. We've also launched a partnership with Metropolitan Family Services, providing mental health services to families. At Oakton right now, in partnership with social workers and staff, we're helping to connect families to that resource. We've also been working to maintain the Vision Clinic partnership with Lumen Optical, which has been serving students of SHUT and King, and working with the Greater Chicago Food Depository to continue the Healthy Kids Food Market, and talking to them about whether that can be expanded, at least to include feeder pattern students or students and families from the other schools. So the big thanks goes to Smolis Nunez, who's been bridging this work in the absence of, there used to be a whole infrastructure and a team through the partnership. And as we've sort of tried to transition this, she's kept all of this afloat and built new stuff in addition to the rest of her work. So she's done a really great job of that, and I think will need some groundwork for this to grow. I think at the end of the day, we really feel like there's a lot of potential in the model, but we needed to kind of, like I said, regroup this year. So we're really grateful to the grant funding that's helped us do that, and we're looking forward to building in the future. So what that means in terms of committee structure going forward, I think we can keep talking about, but we were really mostly concerned this year about making sure that services continued uninterrupted as much as possible to the families who had already received them, and that we were able to lay some groundwork for partnerships that felt like they met needs in the schools and start to get those things lined up as a focus of the work going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Then, policy and finance. We will regroup at the start of the next school year. There's no other business. I adjourn at 9:10. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.